And this is the session for the DOJ and also the judiciary. May I welcome the secretary for judiciary and also the judiciary administrator for attending our meeting and also welcome to their colleagues. I will ask the two heads of, to give a speech first, yes, the S J. Chairman, members have already given a speaking note, so I'm not going to read every word. I just want to highlight the following. The total expenditure for 2014-15 can be carved up into four areas. First, to fill up the vacancies. These posts have been approved in the past. In the past, for one reason or another, they have not been filled. Say, for example, we have not recruited the bodies. Now we have recruited the bodies to fill the posts. The second reason is that we have created thirty-five posts to cope with increasing demand of government departments' legal service. The third reason is that we have earmarked some money for litigation that involves the government. And the fourth is for, or rather, we have earmarked money for court calls and also for briefing out. Say, we may need to brief out to external councils and we may need to engage the support of expert witness. We need to maintain quality of service and such costs may continue to rise. Therefore, we expect that there will be substantial increases in these areas. And because of these four reasons, in the total estimate of 2014-15 amounts to $1,795.7 million. As for the details, members may refer to my speaking notes. Thank you. Next is the judiciary administrator, please. Sorry, speaker is not coming through.
Now, since I've already given my written submission on my speaking notes, I will just highlight several points. This year, judiciary applied for $1,356.6 million. Let me highlight several areas. First, in terms of the review establishment, establishment review in 2013, we proposed to add more manpower. There will be seven additional judicial posts, including three Court of Appeal judges, one High Court first instance judges, and two magistrate judges, magistrates. And by enhancing establishment, relief will be brought to the court and bring relief to the heavy workload. The court set will also enhance support to judicial education. We want to provide more time to JJOs to plan, prepare, deliver, and attend systematic judicial educational activities. We also propose to set up a professional support team led by a professional to support, give support to judicial education activities. We also need to enhance support to various major initiatives, including the implementation of information technology strategy plan. We enhance support to the new additional judicial posts. As for the establishment review, I mentioned that in particular in the High Court, that is a continuous work. We will continue to review the situation. And if need be, we will work within the mechanism agreed with the administration and raise our proposal with the administration. Thank you.
Well, judging from the experience on the last session, initially we'll start with four minutes each, but then after your question, there'll need to be a reply and therefore the four minutes is for both question and answer and therefore you will have to leave enough time for the official to answer the question or else I'll just stop you once your time is up. First, Wong Park King, I have two questions for the Secretary for Justice. And in the coming year, in the Civil Prosecution Division, there are twenty-three, so Civil Law Division, but then there is one item missing. I understand that the Secretary for Justice said in the policy address briefing, he also promised my, he also promised that they will be reinstating the reinstatement order. How come this is not the case? So that should have been done in the last year. So can the S J answer this question? Second question is again for the S J. Zero two five is about international law division. Earlier on, in the Macau SAR, there's a case which is a mega-corruption case. So it's about Hong Kong permanent resident being involved in the case and he was also convicted because there is no rendition arrangement between the two places. And from the media, we can see that what within the Macau judicial system, these people have been convicted, but then apparently they can go scot-free in Hong Kong and they can still go to enjoy dim sum lunches and have dinners and so on. So if you do not consider this further, if you do not reserve this mutual legal assistance arrangement so that there is no surrender of fugitive offenders, then does it mean that we have become the fugitives' haven? And this is not what we'd like to get in terms of our national or international reputation. The other way around is also not good. If fugitives have fled to another place and without such mutual legal assistance in place, they will also be able to go scot-free. So how are you going to deal with these two issues? Two questions. S J, policy issue, I suggest that should not be raised here. So it's about, here we are discussing how resources are being spent. S J, well, first on reinstatement orders, indeed, last time you were right. On another occasion, we discussed that. And when I went back, I did take a look into the situation and according to my understanding, well, I understand that the L W B, when they provide the information, when they provided the information to us, we did follow up on that, but then according to my understanding, the L W B felt that there are certain, there are certain complications, that's why they needed more time. And in terms of reinstatement order in drafting laws or in terms of other legal issues, and if they need the assistance of the D O J, then we'll try our best to help. On the second point about the case being dealt with in the Macau SAR, there's a prosecution case and in recent weeks, you must have read from the press, that between Macau and Hong Kong before the judgment was handed down on this case, the two authorities already started their negotiation on the surrender of fugitive arrangements. So we already started our discussion. In fact, some progress has been made. So we have started that negotiation some time ago and of course, this is still underway, but then we'll try our best to complete our negotiation as soon as possible. So that when time is ripe, we'll come and provide the relevant paper to this council. I'd like to follow up on the second point. What between Hong Kong and Macau with regard to mutual legal assistance, do we have a clearer agreement? Time's up, next. Mister Dennis Quark, thank you, Chairman. I have two questions. They are related to follow-up. J A zero zero one and J A zero one two is a question for the judiciary. In fact, these issues were put to the judiciary last year. So it's about staff establishment, in particular, the shortage of staff experienced by the High Court. In fact, this year, the situation is even more serious. Well, the waiting time has extended from two hundred forty-four to two hundred sixty-six or two hundred sixty-one days. And in your reply, you said that for the C, for the C F I, well, for judges involved, the pressure and also the complexity of the cases have gone up. And yet, in terms of their manpower resources, there have been no increase whatsoever. Very often, the C F I would actually has to, would actually have to second staff to the C F A, for the Court of Appeal in order to deal with pending cases. That's not good enough because that has been the case during the past few years, the waiting time has gone up and you have experienced a shortage of staff. But then last year, actually, no improvement has been made whatsoever. So can the judiciary respond to that? Who is to answer this question? Yes, judiciary administrator. Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Quark, for your question. As I said in the written reply, what within the High Court, at different stages, in terms of manpower, we have conducted a review and different initiatives have been put in place. Well, in simple terms, a few years ago, we started with this establishment review. We looked at the competition tribunal because in the light of its setting, in the light of its being, its establishment, we have to look at our manpower establishment. And also for the Court of Appeal, for all the substantive judges, we have to fill all those vacancies. But then, as we have set out in a paper, despite all those efforts, we are still being very stressed out. That's why we conducted this 2013 comprehensive establishment review. And the outcome is that for the Court of Appeal, the pressure is extremely high. That's why in the estimates and in the budget, we proposed that three posts be created at the C F A so that there would be one additional category of judges. And also earlier on, we have had a serious backlog of criminal appeal cases with the C F A. And as a result, many C F I judges have been seconded to the C F A to deal with this and that would also affect the waiting time for the C F I. That's why in a process at different stages, we have done different things and come up with different packages. And then in 2013, under the establishment review, the conclusion is that we will have to increase our manpower further. And as I just said, as we set out in the paper, with regard to the establishment review, that's an ongoing process. If there is any further need, we will try to increase that further. Thank you, Miss Lau. My further question is, well, at the Court of Appeal, you're going to have a new establishment. But then, to a certain extent, some C F I judges will have to be promoted to become judges of the C of A. So the C F I already had shortages of judges. So not only should you increase the manpower for the C F I and you'll be creating new posts, right? Yes, you have already filled up all the vacancies at the C F A, but then you will have to create new posts at the C F I. Is that your intention? Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman and Mister Quark. Well, there are two aspects. Number one, later on, of course, we will have to submit our establishment proposal to the E S C and also the Finance Committee with your approval. We'll be creating three posts at the Court of Appeal and then there'll be one additional post at the C F I. And after these posts have been created, according to the current policy, the C F A judges will have to be promoted internally. But then for the C F I judge, we will have to conduct open recruitment. At present, for the C F I recruitment exercise, in 2012-13, in 2013, we started that recruitment exercise and in 2014, we'll start another round of recruitment in order to recruit more judges. Thank you. Next, Tam Yu Chong. Thank you, Chairman. My question is J A zero two six. It's about the different levels of court in terms of both civil and criminal cases for the unrepresented cases. I'd like to know the number of such cases. Well, according to the information that you provided, apparently, at the District Court, for unrepresented litigants, the percentage is lower, but then higher up, there are more people who are not legally represented. So the percentage of unrepresented litigants would stand at a higher percentage. Is that a trend? I E, more and more litigants are not represented by council? Is it that they are not eligible for legal aid? That's why many of them would rather go unrepresented. Yes, the administration does have the duty lawyer or resource center for unrepresented litigants, but then some ninety percent apparently are happy with the services provided by the resource center. But then, the resource center will only be able to tell them what the procedures are and so on. With regard to the merits of their cases, apparently, barely too can be provided or offered by the resource center. Is that the case? Yes, judiciary administrator. Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Tam. Well, for unrepresented litigants, with regard to this trend, well, if you look at the figures, generally speaking, we agree that it accounts for quite a large number of litigants. As has been pointed out, at the District Court level, well, the figure is actually on the high side when compared to the High Court. As to the reason, we are not too sure. Well, there might be different reasons attributing to this. But then, if you look at the judiciary, as far as the judiciary is concerned, we have set up this resource center for unrepresented litigants. Well, because of the neutrality of the judiciary, we are only providing procedural assistance. But then, we are also aware that as far as the executive arm is concerned, in particular, under the Home Affairs Department, they have this pilot program. And for a while, some time ago, they set up a specific center to help litigants in civil cases who are unrepresented to deal with certain cases. And this resource center, the, is also set up within the High Court and therefore, the Division of Labor is that judiciary would offer assistance in terms of the procedure. If there are other aspects involving the case, then we'll refer them to the H A D Run Pilot Scheme for advice. Thank you. I'd like to seek further clarification. What is the trend? So my question is, can you, do you think that there is a rising trend that there are more and more litigants who are unrepresented? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Tam. Well, what we can see is, the trend has been there for some time. Well, as far as the High Court is concerned, during the past two years or so, the situation has been rather steady. As for the District Court, there is a rising trend. Next, Raymond Chan. Thank you, Chairman. I have two questions. One is about S J zero zero four. It's about the five additional posts to meet the needs and then two posts, including senior counsel and government counsel. Well, has to provide legal support for the, for the sex, sexual recognition and so on. Well, for the interdepartmental sexual orientation recognition team, so I'd like to know a bit more. So it's about a working group on gender recognition. So for these two posts, they are there for two years. So does it mean that the work of this group will be for two years? So is it for the purposes of legislating on gender recognition? And then, S J zero two seven is about the Law Reform Commission. There are eight research projects. So I'd like to know, is there a limit? In other words, they will have to complete one study before they can start another one? And also, is there any expiry for these study items or project items because for sex crime? So it has been ongoing for some time, so will you be reviewing the progress and would you think that the progress has not been satisfactory? Thank you, Chairman. S J zero zero four, for the main purpose is that, is the workload. And the reason is that according to our initial experience, three meetings have been held so far and in accordance with the current law, well, if we were to legislate or amend the legislation and certain laws will be affected, we will have to conduct a comprehensive review. And we found out that the amount would be very large and the legal implications could be very far-reaching and complicated. That's why we hope as far as possible, all the common law jurisdictions and places where such legislation is in place, we will be making a comparison with them. That's why according to our current projection in terms of the workload, it's going to be mamas. That's why we hope that initially, we can come up with an initial work report and that will take about two years.
That is similar to that when it was done in the U K, they talk about two years in terms of this part of the work. And we will also do some informal consultation. We will meet with stakeholders such as professionals and doctors. The workload is heavy and the matter is also complicated. As for Mister Chan's second question, S J zero two seven, concerning the eight ongoing L R C projects. Within our mechanism, there is no cap on the number of projects undertaken by the L R C. In terms of resources and time, we have to consider various factors. Number one, how much time can members of the L R C spend on looking into the issues, whether there are adequate committees or subcommittees to deal with individual issues? As for time constraint and a time limit and whether there are other factors, Mister Chan mentioned sexual offenses. They have broken up the items into individual issues and therefore, there will be different reports. And some items or some projects have to, have taken a longer time depending on their own circumstances. Say, for example, in one case, a subcommittee member is indisposed and therefore, the matter has been delayed. After I have, I will try to keep the time. Mister Tong Niche, if I may follow up on J A zero two eight. From the date of setting to, setting for hearing to the actual hearing, in 2013, average listing time or waiting time is rather long. At the first of January 2014, the target will be to reduce the waiting time by ten days. Now, why don't you set this shorter? Make it shorter? Why you just cut it by ten days or for what reasons? And concerning the establishment, thirty-one. That's Lance Tribunal 2013-14 and in 2014-15, the number remains the same. Is it because of this that the waiting time cannot be reduced? The establishment of 2014-15, how does it compare with the establishment in 2012 and 13? The judiciary administrator. Thank you, Mister Chair, for your question. If I may answer the question in respect of waiting time at the Lance Tribunal. Although we have not increased its manpower, in earlier years, when we had to deal with compulsory sales, we added manpower to the tribunal. With adequate addition of manpower, then we should look at the situation in a more prudent manner. In respect of the waiting time, in respect of the four cases, four, four types of cases, the waiting time is still falling behind our targets. Concerning the review on listing, this is to enhance case management. When the case is ready for hearing, then we will list the case. When we talk to the user committee, when we discuss the user committee, they, they come up with the view that it is prudent for us to make a conservative adjustment on the target days. And then, we will look at the new listing arrangement and what is the impact of the listing arrangement on the waiting time and then we'll conduct a review. If the new listing arrangement use some, the room for further improvement, then we will make further improvement. In answering, Mister Chairman, in answering Mister Tam's question, I want to add one more point. Can I do it here? Please do it ASAP. In answering Mister Tam's question, well, this is my time, my apologies. She thought she had already answered your question. I have follow-up question. Please then hold, hold your peace. I have asked whether the manpower of 2014-15 is more than that of 2012-13. She can give me a reply in writing. Next question is J A oh seven one, oh one seven rather. Can you give me some more time? In 2013-14, we have not increased manpower and in 2012-13, we did increase our manpower. Thank you. Do I, can I have the number, Chairman? That can be done in writing after meeting. Another question, although time is up, since time is up, I will ask in writing. I, in fact, had a follow-up question, therefore, in order not to ask too many questions at one go, I just keep it to just one by one. Next, Miss Emily Lau. I want to ask the secretary concerning criminal prosecution. Last time, when the secretary came to the panel, I, panel meeting, I had already asked it. There were two corruption cases concerning one, concerning Donald Chung, the other concerning Timothy Tong. Why he has taken so much time? Not the previous government prosecutor or criminal prosecutor, a director of prosecution, D P P, had already been working on that and we have the new D P P. Do you have them, do you have any problem with that? People have been asking, have you briefed out the case or what is the progress? Should it be answered by the D P P or the S J? I will say a few words and see if the D P P has anything to say. It is not a matter of resources. And we have not briefed out the case at the present moment. You may have noticed from the press that these two cases are still being handled by the I C A C. In the investigation process, the role of the D O J is to provide legal advice if there is a need. Because of Division of Labor, the investigation is not done by the D O J. Maybe the D P P, Mister Young, can supplement. Mister Young, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Like every other cases in terms of investigation and prosecution, the Prosecution Division will consider the case when we have a report on that. And before the completion of investigation, then the departments may seek legal advice and the Prosecution Division can provide legal advice and support. Before the completion of investigation, the Prosecution Division has very little to do. Now, when the previous D P P upon his retirement, after his retirement, said that the matter was near completion, is it because of a new man in the seat that there is further progress? The secretary, if I may add two points. When the previous D P P, after the previous D P P left, there has been other investigation work. As for the statement that the work had been nearly completed, I think there As for the statement that the work had been nearly completed, I think there is a different view. With regard to the cases investigated by the ICAC. The ICAC has to submit these cases to the ORC, Operation Reviews Committee. Yes, yes, this is chaired by Mr. C. You don't need to mention that it's your department dragging the feet. We have not, we are not dragging our feet. I and Mr. Young have already said that the DOJ is not responsible for investigation. We provide legal advice only. As for the work of the ORC, it is not possible to drag the feet because the ORC is looking at the matter. Or at the progress of cases under investigation. Next, Mr. Tan Kafiu.
First, JA oh three oh. This is about the Labor Tribunal. In twenty eleven and in twenty thirteen, there has been no significant increase in cases four oh two and fourteen. Just in four oh two and four thousand. Just an increase of two case, but the number of days, forty days to fifty five days. What are the reasons? And the economy has been rather stable and there has been no large scale layoff or second. There is demand for increasing salaries and there are labor disputes. But we do not have too many cases that requires the Labor Tribunal. Now, in the, with regard to the Labor Tribunal. The judge allows the representatives to give, allows representation. But there is no record of that. I think the point is that the Labor Tribunal means efficiency and flexibility and can appoint the labor unions as representatives. Now, on more than one occasion with the concern of workers, labor union representatives, we're not allowed to represent the workers. Why is it so? Now, you've increased resources by more than twenty percent. You work on. You want to add more manpower. Have you talked to the legal? And will that also help? So that our secretary can also respond in terms of more resources in order to deal with your rising demand for drafting law? Yes, I think, Mr. Chairman, I'm answering the first and second question. The third question is not within my portfolio.
Now, concerning the waiting time of the Labor Tribunal. Now, the number of cases has been stable. Now, from filing to award. The time, average time includes all cases, cases that needs a trial, cases that doesn't need a trial. In twenty thirteen, the cases or the time required for settling for cases is normal. Say, the first hearing remained twenty five days. Average time taken from filing to first hearing, twenty five days in the past three years. But why the average time has increased? Now, in twenty thirteen, in twenty thirteen, there were a number of cases which were filed in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. They were related to a particular litigation. And that, and there was appeal going, an appeal going on. And because of the appeal, this batch of cases had been deferred.
So pending the outcome of the appeal in twenty thirteen. So you will have to ask again in the next round, next, Albert Chan. Chairman, two questions. One in relation to the ICAC because I filed the complaint myself with the ICAC against Donald Zhang. And I filed two complaints. And on one occasion, I was told that there was a lack of evidence. But then about a year or so ago, there was no reply yet. So it involved the allegation that he was, he was corrupt by taking advantage in traveling both by sea, by air and on land. So I'd like to know, is it a deliberate attempt to delay it when it comes to the DOJ? And it's also about the performance of the DOJ. So is it the problem of the ICAC or the DOJ? Were there political reasons behind this late decision? And as a result, you were indecisive? Or is it that you've already given the advice? But then when it went to the CE, he was trying to drag his feet in order to gain some political mileage or for political reasons? So I'd like to know if it has anything to do with the DOJ in terms of the investigation? Another question is a recent question, SJ zero zero four. In fact, last Wednesday, I put it to the SJ. It's about arbitration awards. And this is about the SJ becoming the representative in the Asia Pacific Arbitration Center. And therefore, you will have to create this government council post in order to promote this. So apparently, this post is there to help promote your status as an international arbitration center in Asia Pacific. But then, when it comes to assisting the small landlords to go for mediation and so on. Apparently, you think that there are, there is no resource and no plan to do this. So you're trying to build up your reputation. But then, when it comes to the ordinary citizen trying to go for mediation. Your answer is that no resources have been made available for that. So will you help the small citizen in order to deal with some of the disputes? So that they can, they can take the administration to court on land disputes and so on instead of using your resources to suppress the ordinary citizen? Well, to answer the first part of the question. First of all, I'd like to clarify that for raw criminal prosecution, according to Article sixty three of the Basic Law, is the DOJ which will be responsible for that without any interference from whoever is in power. That's why you talk about the papers being submitted to the CE and the decision has yet to be taken. That's absolutely untrue and that would never happen. I hope to clarify this solemnly. I don't want members of the public to have this impression because of the question asked by Mr. Albert Chan. I don't want any misunderstanding on the part of the public. And also on policy decisions, in my earlier answer to another member, I've already made it clear. There is a division of labor. Investigation is undertaken by the ICAC. So the ICAC is responsible for investigation. With regard to any advice on prosecution or the ultimate decision to prosecute. That's the responsibility of the DOJ. But then for investigation before it's completed, before the relevant papers have been passed on to the DOJ. We are in no position to make a decision to prosecute. That's why, given the circumstances, one cannot say that the DOJ has committed any mistake or we are not, or that we are trying to cover up anybody. And I'd also like to make it absolutely clear, there is no political consideration whatsoever. My question has not been answered at all. What about my second question? All right, the SJ has said that because of his personal reputation. If you allow me to answer, I'll be more than happy to do so. Next, Priscilla Lau. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask a question on SJ zero five two. It's again on the interdepartmental working group on gender recognition. All right, just now, you said that three meetings have been held and two posts will be created. So I'd like to know in terms of the modus operandi of this interdepartmental working group. Because I've also said on the, on the sexual minority group. And all right, I had some different views. So it's difficult to strike the right balance. So I'm extremely concerned. Would the administration be overdoing it? So there is this judgment and it's a very narrow judgment. So it's just said that after the sex reassignment surgery has completed. And you also said that you would have to make reference to the UK experience. But then how about local culture? And you should have taken heed of the public's concern. That if you just look at one aspect, if you just copy from the UK experience. And there might be adverse or positive discrimination because there's a Christian school which has been subject to a lot of attacks and criticisms. So that's before the legislation is in place. So I'd like to know, you're going to get some advice. I hope that that could be more balanced so that you can incorporate and accommodate all views. So I'd like to know a bit more about this study. How is it going to be done? Because I'm also looking at marriage law in the three places across the street. So I'd like to know if one aspect of the views will be given sufficient importance. That's one aspect. And secondly, about judges, you talk about the shortage. And I've heard that one reason for the shortage being that we are short of space. So apparently, if you have more space, then you can recruit more judges because judges do not have office to work in. So what is the actual situation? SJ?
Well, very briefly, we fully agree and understand that in different places, they have different culture and cultural background. And on gender recognition, we absolutely understand that it's a very complicated issue. It's not just about the relevant legislation, which is complicated, the local culture. I think Asia, when compared to places outside Asia. So how should we draw the line? Well, that's absolutely something that we will take into account. At present, we have already set out some of the issues that we will have to look into. And of course, in looking into those issues, we will adopt different approaches so that at different stages, we will conduct informal consultation. And there will also be formal consultations. So please rest assured, Ms. Lau, that the Hong Kong public will for different quarters and different groups in the community, they will be fully consulted and we will fully respect their views. And how about office accommodation for judges? Is that the judiciary administrator who will answer the question? Yes, thank you, Ms. Lau, for your question.
Well, my brief response is that starting from the, at the start of the legal year, the Court of, the Chief Justice has already made it clear. That is, in twenty thirteen, July, with regard to the long term resource requirement for the judiciary, including the office accommodation that will be needed by the judiciary. We have already written to the executive and it's being positively considered.
Next, Charles Mock. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to point out that, well, SJ zero four seven, in fact, your reply is wrong. But I don't blame you because you're not very familiar with IT. Originally, I would like to ask that for information available to the public. You only gave us two websites. Well, that's not the information items. Well, I can give you some example for raw court judgments. So will you use an Excel file or XML, which is a readable file, instead of just giving me the address of the website? And in your reply, you talk about the access format. Well, instead of giving me XML, you just gave me the wrong answer. So I hope that you can follow that up and I'll be asking that later in writing. And you not be able to answer this question. Another one is JA zero zero eight. I'd like to ask this. All right, that question is about the introduction of Wi-Fi in courts. So I'd like to know the usage policy. So it said that while the court is in progress, members of, members of the public or other parties, including the counsel and also jurors attending the court. Would they be able to use this Wi-Fi? Because in overseas countries, many of them are talking about Twitter in a court. In other words, there would be instant reporting in the courtroom. So after the installation of Wi-Fi, how would that be used? And also at different levels of the court, would there be different policies? Thank you. Yes, JA?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mock, for your question. On the use of Wi-Fi, well, we have consulted two professional groups. And then we have also issued a practical guide. There is a code, there is a guideline. Without affecting the fairness and openness and also the formal progress of the trial, anybody can use Wi-Fi in a courtroom. Under what circumstances would that be banned? Or the chairing judge or the presiding judge will make that decision? At present, in terms of the use of Wi-Fi, it's only available at family court and also at the small claims tribunal, that is at the Wenchai courthouse. And also at the CFA, we have installed and used Wi-Fi. And the actual usage has been very smooth. In other words, where there are situations whereby it's not allowed to be used, then the presiding judge will make a decision. And if the presiding judge has not taken that decision, then it will be allowed. In other words, if the judge has not mentioned that it will be banned, then anybody is free to use it and there is no restriction as to who is allowed to use it. Well, even jurors will be allowed to use it. Is that right? JA?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mock, for your question. First of all, for the jury, well, there would only be jurors at the High Court. At present, Wi-Fi has not been installed in the High Court. And just now, you asked whether or not journalists and also litigants and even members of the public will be allowed to use that. Well, that's done on the premise and that's provided under the practice, practice direction. That is, the hearing must not be hampered in terms of its fairness, openness and formal progress.
Next, Gary Fan. Thank you, Chairman. SJ zero three nine. Well, during the past year, some two point five million dollars has been used on the consultancy study on the development of arbitration and Asia Pacific International Arbitration Center. What are the challenges and opportunities? And this year, apparently, you're going to spend another two point five million dollars for another study. And you'll also be following up on the findings in order to promote the establishment of an international arbitration center. And the time needed will be very lengthy and you're still in the study stage. So I'd like to know, well, pending the outcome or findings of the study, there will be appropriate follow up action. So would you be completing that study within this year? And afterwards, are you going to look at the findings? And what kind of follow up action are you referring to? And also, if it's not done this year, then how about next year? Are you going to continue with this study? I'd like to know the actual follow up action to be taken. SJ? I'll ask Mr. Pun, who is responsible for this project, to answer.
Yes, Chairman, let me explain on this particular project and the progress that has been made. In undertaking this study, this is a consultancy study. For the time being, we haven't started with it yet. And we plan to work with Hong Kong's TDC, the Trade Development Council. Because they also have this plan to conduct such a study. And we plan to do it in the next twelve or even longer period of time. And for the two point five million dollars to be set aside for this purpose. Well, at the beginning, we'll be working with the TDC. And that's the estimate that we have worked up with the TDC. That should be enough for us to complete that consultancy report. And for the coming year, another two point five million dollars will be spent. And if the consultant suggests that additional resources will have to be spent on that study, then that might be necessary. But then it might not be needed. And then if it's needed, we will decide how it's going to be used. As to the follow up action, that depends on the recommendation by the consultant as to what needs to be done to enable Hong Kong's arbitration can be done better where there are resource implications. If indeed we have to press ahead with that, then for the two point five million dollars from this year, that will be. that will be rolled over to be spent next year. But then that would depend on the recommendation by the consultant. Thank you. Next, second round, three minutes. Wong Kwok-hing. Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'd like to follow up with the SJ. Just now, I was asking about the mutual legal assistance between Hong Kong and Macau in criminal cases. And the Secretary was about to answer the question, but then he didn't have time. So I'd like him to answer this in detail.
I think this question is a public concern. We don't want Hong Kong to be a haven of criminals. Yes, the Secretary. Now, if you look at the timeframe, after, soon after I took office, attention was paid to this issue. And we started to talk with the relevant authorities in Macau in particular with regard to the surrendering of fugitives. Afterwards, concerning the surrender of fugitives, we did some follow-up work. Members may have noticed in recent day reports that the Mr. Chan of Macau, the Secretary of Justice of Macau, Mr. Chan, disclosed that colleagues on both sides had further meetings on surrendering of fugitives. The recent meeting was not the first one. With regard to the surrender of fugitives, we hope that the documents concerning the arrangement can be finalized very soon. And then after the document has been finalized, we will submit our draft legislation to the Legislative Council. Just like other jurisdictions, when there is mutual legal assistance in terms of criminal law, the surrendering of fugitives arrangement is similar. First, we have an agreement. And if we enter into an agreement, if we sign the agreement, then we will move on to enacting the relevant legislation in Hong Kong similarly. Macau will do the same. And then we will be able to provide mutual legal assistance in terms of criminal law, in particular, the surrender of fugitives. We have returned to the mainland for quite some time. And we really hope that we can very soon be able to provide mutual legal assistance, in particular, with regard to surrendering of fugitives. Mr. Kenneth Kwok. Oh, back on, this is Dennis Kwok. Well, I will not speak on the judiciary anymore. I don't want to take up the time. This waiting time is getting serious. And we have not seen any additional manpower and resources to tackle the problem. We are not able to see how many new bodies you can recruit. This is something we need to follow up. The other question is SJ033 about court prosecutors. When the Secretary was the chairman of the barrister, the Bar Association, he said that the number of court prosecutors should be reduced. So the trained lawyers should take up the prosecution work. But if you look at court prosecutors, the workload is still very high, more than the workload of the barristers who are trained. I hope, I still have another question, but let him answer my question, this question first. Concerning court prosecutors, after I and Mr. Young have taken office, we pay special attention, we pay special attention to this. Mr. Kwok asks whether those who are legally trained should take up all the court prosecution work. We understand this view. But the point is that the, as for the court prosecutors, incumbent court prosecutors, they have a role to play in terms of prosecution and they have contributed a lot. Their performance should be recognized or their contribution should be recognized. I and Mr. Young have visited the courts and talked to the court prosecutors. And we, in particular, on the future development of this post, we also talked to the labor union. Now, they have made various proposals and we will discuss these proposals with them. And we will update the Legislative Council in due course. Will they recruit new court prosecutors? Or have you stopped the recruitment of court prosecutors? I think maybe in 2009 or so, it was the last recruitment of court prosecutors or the court prosecutor grade. And at that time, a report was made to the council. Well, it was in 2008, not 2009. Since then, we have not recruited any new court prosecutors and some of those recruited had already left. Next is the Paul Che. I want to follow up on the handling of cases by the Land Tribunal, JA017. And that's in respect of dealing with compulsory sale. From filing to first hearing, 139 days. And then altogether, it takes about 200 days. Has the administration reviewed the situation and shortened the waiting time? That is really having a serious impact on the progress of development and also on the residents affected. As for the establishment of the Land Tribunal, 31 people or 31 officers, there was an increase in the past. Because of increase in manpower, has there been any reduction in the waiting time? I mentioned the dates, you can see for yourselves. Is there any shortening of the waiting time? Thank you, Mr. Che for the question. In 2012, we added one district court judge and also one tribunal member. And as a result, we have dealt, we dealt with the compulsory sale applications. As for filing until, and also hearing, all these dates are needed. In fact, both sides need time to prepare the case from filing to listing. We have also need some other, we have to go through some other steps. After we've added two officers to the Land Tribunal, we have adequate manpower to deal with compulsory sale applications. And we also flexibly redeployed resources. In terms of handling other types of cases, the waiting time is still satisfactory. I have no follow-up. Next, Mr. Tang Karpiu. Thank you, Chairman. I still want to ask the same question. An explanation has been given why the number of days was increased from 40 to 55. But is it possible to do some statistics? Can representatives be allowed to speak at the Land, at the Labor Tribunal? And can that be recorded? And that's about the power of representation. That's the same logic as whether to have legal representation or not. There are many laws to be drafted. The council has to respond accordingly. Have you talked to the Legislative Council and make suggestions to the council so that the council can increase its manpower in terms of legal support? The JA? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chairman. I think I have to deal with only the first question. As for the statistics for the Labor Tribunal, the number of cases we have to handle. In our case handling system, we do not collect such statistics. As for a particular case, whether there is legal, whether there can be representation is the decision of the judge and we do not want to comment on that. As for whether statistics can be collected in this regard, I have to talk to the colleagues to see if that is possible. As for the second question, I think it is not the ambit, or within the ambit of the judiciary. And the SJ, if my understanding is correct, Mr. Chairman, in respect of drafting of new laws and amending laws, we do have a lot of opportunities to communicate with the legal. There is informal communication and informal communication with legal members. And formal communication is conducted through the relevant panels. Say if a particular piece of legislation is related to the ambit of a particular panel, then the panel will be consulted. And also within the AJ, with the AJLS panel, discussion is also made with regard to legal matters. So on many occasions, in terms of the drafting of new laws, in terms of amending existing laws, from the preparation by the bureaus and also the drafting by the DOJ to the tabling of the legislation, there has been a lot of discussions and communication. And we welcome your advice in this regard. Next, Ms. Resila Leng. I want to ask a question on SJ041, mediation and arbitration. I did a oral question and I put an oral question to the Policy Secretary. I asked for the expansion of arbitration on livelihood issues such as property management dispute, dispute of overseas and also compulsory sale. Arbitration has the merits. The people who are, the professionals who are familiar with the matters can be involved, though they are not lawyers. In fact, I have to declare this. I'm also an arbitrator of International Economic Arbitration Association. Mr. Michael, Mr. James Tian commented that your pilot scheme on premium assessment only benefits the rich. But arbitration is a platform to deal with disputes. Can the secretary be more open so that you will also consider extending arbitration to matters relating to people's livelihoods? And also, another issue is law on apology. This is sort of, that is related to cases like the Lama incident. I think this, if you can expand the scope of the law, you will help a lot in resolving disputes. So will you take that into account as well? Thank you, Ms. Leng, for the question. Concerning the law on apology, apart from cases involving the government, such as the case mentioned by the government, we have no special restriction on the direction of study to a particular kind of incident. Say, for example, in respect of medical incidents overseas, in overseas countries, there is a piece of legislation in this regard and it helps a lot in settling the case. As for labor disputes and also cases involving personal matters, this is also very effective. At present, we don't have a specific restriction on the scope.
On the issue of arbitration, in this regard, we have an open mind. Because when it comes to promoting arbitration and mediation, we do not have a straitjacket mindset. And therefore, we are more than happy to discuss it with Ms. Leng. Emily Lau, I'd like to put it to the JA. She said that back in 2005, there was an arrangement with regard to budget preparation. Over the years, we've been talking about the shortage of judges. I don't know why the judiciary has been very slow in dealing with that problem. So I'd like to know, is it that the executive is staunchly against increasing your establishment? That's point number one. You said that there will be seven more judges. But then just now, we asked whether or not there was sufficient space and office accommodation for these additional judges because the Chief Justice told us this. And yes, arrangement is made for a new complex to be built and it would take 10, 15 years. So how is that going to be resolved in the interim? JA?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Lau, for your question. Well, since 2005, under the budgetary arrangement with the administration, as we said, the arrangements had been going on smoothly and the administration has been offering us a lot of assistance. That's why in terms of resources, it's not true to say that we are not being supported by the administration. On the contrary, they have been very supportive. And every time when there is a resource review, we have to do it very cautiously. We have to look at the works, the need of our work before we make any recommendation. And during the past few years, at different stages, we proposed to create different posts. And this year, we proposed to create seven judiciary officers posts. And in the long run, as I said, the Chief Justice of the CFA said that in the long run, with regard to our need for office accommodation, our recommendation has been written to the executive. And after the seven judges have been hired, of course, we do need to have sufficient office accommodation for them. For the time being, we do have enough space for these seven additional judges. But then in the long run, the pressure will grow. That's why, starting from last year, for our medium to long-term needs and our recommendation and our needs have been formulated to the executive for consideration. Chairman, how long would it take for the executive to come back and give you a reply? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Lau, for your question. My understanding is that the executive has been looking into that positively. But then I'm not supposed to answer that on their behalf. But then that will not be featured in this year's budget. Is that right? Obviously, that will not be featured in this year's budget or else you would have known about it, right? Okay. As we all heard it, you have to be aware of this council's concerns. All right, you said that you've taken it upon yourself. It's you who have not made the recommendation. That's why you have not been able to create the post. And that's why the waiting time has been so long. All right, time's up. Two will be asking in the second round. One will be asking in the third round. Tam Yew-chong asking in the second round. Well, just now, Chairman, the JA apparently said that she had something to add. So I'll give her my time to supplement. Yes, thank you. I was very quick. That's why I was concerned that I might not have expressed myself entirely clear. You talk about the trend for unrepresented litigants. I'd like to know the trend is that as far as the district council, the district court is concerned, yes, there is a rising trend. But then this is about the overall figure. Yes, there is an increase in the total number of cases. But then what I'd like to say is, if you just look at certain types of cases and if you just look at the percentage, in some cases, there have been a drop. And therefore, if you look at the overall figure and also the percentage, there might be some difference or discrepancy. But then, as far as we are concerned, we'll be looking at both aspects. And we have been monitoring the trend closely. I'd just like to clarify that. Thank you. Mr. Chung Kwok-pen asking for the first time. Yes, I'd like to know JA003.
Yes, I'd like to know, JA003, it's about the competition ordinance and the Competition Tribunal. I'd like to know the progress. Apparently, the reply is that it's under preparation. So what's the progress? And when can it start this work? Are you, is it on schedule? Yes? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chong, for your question. In the reply, we said that preparation is underway, full steam. And as far as the judiciary is concerned, the relevant posts have been created. And also for the registrar and also the deputy registrar, we have already started that work. And as far as the judiciary is concerned, what's most pressing is to deal with the rules for the tribunal. And we'd like to consult the sector as soon as possible. We'd like to submit data to this council as soon as possible. That's the highlight of our work this year. Well, you refer to the sector. So are you referring to the two streams of the legal profession? That is the Bar Association and the Law Society. But then there have been a lot of feedback from the SMEs. So will you also be consulting them? Well, our consultation would not just be covering the trade and also all the stakeholders will be consulted. For the detailed plan, we are still drafting that. And all the relevant factors will be taken into account in conducting our consultation exercise. I'd like to ask a follow-up. Do you have a timetable? Any timetable yet? Yes, we have. We hope that within this year, we'll be able to start the consultation within this year. Last one. Dennis Kwok asking for the third time, two minutes. Yes, thank you, Chairman. Well, early this month, I was attending the ETO in New York and I was finding out how they're going to promote Hong Kong as an arbitration and mediation centre. Well, in terms of promoting arbitration, I'm sure one of the highlights is, as the SJ is aware, we hope that we'll be able to organize the ICA International Conference in 2018. So that's in organizing such conferences, well, you will have to work very hard and you will have to inform people as to what resources can be made available for that purpose. That's very important. So I hope that the SJ will be able to come over to this council for funding in order to organize this ICA 2018 conference. And as you know, this year, we have also approved funding for the Finance Minister's meeting for APEC this year. And of course, they would need some, need time before they can do it. So in terms of our international arbitration, I hope that you can step up your efforts in that and the Civic Party is fully supportive of that. Yes, thank you, Chairman. With regard to ICA's International Conference in 2018, the DOJ gives its full support for this. And as of now, we have internally deployed monetary resources in support of the application for hosting that conference in Hong Kong. Well, a few days later, Mr. Pun, our colleague responsible for that, will also be flying to Miami to show our support for that. And last week, senior officials, including the Chief Executive and myself, have also written in support of that. And I also hope that this application will succeed. And if we succeed, then we'll come back to this council to brief you on the details and we'll also be applying for the relevant funding. Thank you. All right. We have already spent all the time for the second session. All right, the next session will start at 4:50. Thank you. In 10 minutes' time.